Do well.
Thought you weren't.
That's a good idea.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. But he is in a sample rise good to order them. Good. We'll come to order two minutes late, but we'll survive. Anyway, we come to order for the November the 20th border supervisors meeting. And first order of business will be Pastor John Franklin from Salem, United Methodist Church.
Church.
Salem Church. Okay, not United Methodist, no, I'm sorry.
Let's all go to the Lord in prayer. Father, we just come to you tonight for Thanksgiving in our hearts. Father, we know this is the week of Thanksgiving, but every day should be Thanksgiving in our hearts and our lives. I thank you for each person here, Father, that is dear and dear to our hearts. Father, for this democracy that we are so blessed with. We thank you for hearing us and answering our prayers, for loving us, for taking care of us. We thank you most of all, Father, for your son, our Savior, Jesus Christ, who loved us the most, that he gave his life, that we can be reconciled to you and have eternal life. Father, we thank you for his love. In Jesus' name we pray all of God's goodness.
Amen. Amen. Thank you, John. To the pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have a moment of silence in recognition of the U.S. military serving here and abroad in all public safety. Thank you. You're seated. The first order of business will be the recognition of Patrick County Public Schools. Mr. Jason Wood Superintendent. And I'll read it. Patrick County Public Schools is ranked ninth out of 131 school divisions in standards of learning performance, highest-ranked school division in surrounding counties. Patrick County Public Schools is one of the 18 school divisions that have shown at least one test to improve since the pandemic. Pandemic, I get you right. Patrick County Public Schools is ranked fourth in the consortium of public school divisions in Virginia, who work collaborative to improve student achievement as measured by Virginia Standards of Learning Assessments. Patrick County Public Schools is one of the top-performing divisions in the state when comparing poverty levels. All right, you got that.
Just send the members of the board, thank you for taking time out of your business to give us a recognize our school system. As you can see, I'm not here alone tonight. I have representatives from every job category we have in our school division, from principals, teachers, administrators, maintenance, cap tier workers, custodians, and even school board members, and most importantly, some of our students. So we want to say thank you because it is a true family atmosphere in Patrick County Public Schools. And everyone in our community, I hope you should be proud because of the great job that we're doing. Oh, we got bus drivers mechanics on this side. So we have everyone represented because it is truly a family atmosphere. We cannot do what we do each and every day without the hard-working staff we have, the community support we have, and the collaboration we have with the board of supervisors. So thank you and just continue to pray for us, for our leaders in the board supervisors and us at the school division, so that we can continue doing what's best for our students.
And next, we've got recognition of Jeb Stuart Rescue Squad members, Mr. Troy McAdams, N R E M T, paramedic, and Ms. Shayna Balaus, N R E M T, basic. This is a long one, I'll try to read it. On July the 9th, 2023, Jeb Stuart Rescue Squad was dispatched to a call in the Stewart area for a 60-year-old female complaining of chest pains. Station 3 had a paramedic crew on duty. Troy McAdams, N R E M T, paramedic, and Shayna Balaus, N R E M T, basic was the responding crew. The crew arrived on scene and found the female patient sitting on the couch complaining of crushing chest pain. For approximately 20 minutes, an ECG was obtained, and paramedic Troy McAdams quickly interpreted the ECG and noted ST elevation forming the impression the patient was having an ST elevation myocardial infraction, STEMI. The crew quickly placed AED pads and requested an air ambulance. While the crew was moving the patient down the steps in a stair chair, the patient became unresponsive with no pulse. Troy McAdams interpreted the cardiac rhythm as ventriculofibrillation, which is a life-threatening rhythm that requires immediate medical attention. Paramedic Troy McAdams defibrillated or shocked the patient, and CPR was initiated. During transport to the landing zone, the patient experienced the same episode six more times. This is a total of seven times that the crew endured and successfully managed the patient losing consciousness, pulses, and not breathing. The crew quickly responded to these changes, defibrillating each time, which resulted in the patient regaining consciousness, pulses, and breathing on her own. Paramedic Troy McAdams administered medications, and the patient maintained an irregular sinus rhythm with strong pulses, a normal blood pressure, and remained conscious. Patient care was transferred to the air ambulance crew, Carillion Lifeguard. Later that evening, paramedic Troy McAdams and Derek Wagner transported another patient to Carillion Run-up Memorial. While at Carillion, Mr. McAdams called to check the status of this patient and was invited to visit with the patient in ICU where she was alert, oriented, and talking. The patient recognized Troy McAdams and stated, "You saved my life." Jeb Stuart Rescue Squad attended the EMS Field Heart Alert Meeting on August the 16th. During the meeting, this case was presented and reviewed by Chief Cardiologist Dr. Sane. Dr. Sane expressed that EMS performed very well with the patient while experiencing very difficult events, and that if it was not for EMS, the patient would probably not be here today. At the end of the meeting, their crew was presented with a nomination letter for the Horizon Award. Horizon is an acronym that stands for high-quality, optimistic, resourceful, innovative, zealous, objective, and never quits. This case, an example of the saying, "Not all heroes wear capes of being true." And we've got a couple of certificates we want to give to y'all, so if y'all will come forward and get them, and we'll come down. Yeah, that's right. Get my steps in. I guess you're a circle out. Represent this team, and we appreciate everything that y'all do.
Thank you.
It sounds like I'll definitely sign that lady's, save that lady's part. If she'll wait, we'll let them get a picture. Troy McAdams.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, everybody. Then we go to regular session. And let's see, we'll need a motion. Or is any amendment that you want to make to the agenda that we don't have here?
Yeah, there should be, you should have three amendments.
You still, you still. This one's a good one. We've got so much paperwork tonight. Which we have. You got it numbered, I just didn't see it. All right, we'll add to new business, Mr. Christopher Dadak. Attorney for Renwood L.P.C., non-zoned county solar clarification. The new business will have scheduled a public hearing for December 11th, 2023, to amend Patrick County Public Schools fiscal year 2023-2024 budget. And we'll take away from old business, Mr. Scotty Castle Emergency Management Director request for funding. Right now, we'll look for approval of the meeting agenda. Got a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion?
I'll second.
I'll second. Call for vote?
Aye.
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 And I vote aye also. Then we need a motion to approve the minutes from October the 16th. No amendments to them or anything?
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion?
I'll second.
I'll second. Call for vote?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye also. And we need a motion to approve the bills, claims, and appropriations. There's no questions.
I'll make the motion.
Got a motion?
I'll second that.
I'll second. Call for vote?
Aye.
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 And I'll vote aye also. All right. For public comment. Get a motion to open public comment?
Yeah.
No, only a motion, okay. We'll open public comment then, and the first one I've got on the list is Mr. Kurt Bosenmeyer from Smith River.
Good evening. My name, my name is Kurt Bosenmeyer. I'm from the Smith River District, and I would like to make a few comments about recent events in the county. First, as we are in the early part of the Thanksgiving holiday week, I would like to thank the firefighters and rescue personnel for their recent efforts in containing and extinguishing the Tuggles Gap fire. This was an event of unprecedented magnitude, and the extraordinary efforts of all the responding personnel is exceptionally praiseworthy. Included in these thanks are the Patrick County Sheriff's Office, all the agencies from surrounding counties that assisted Patrick County, and all the neighbors and civilian volunteers who contributed time, supplies, money, and other resources to this effort. And thanks to Tuggles Gap Motel and Restaurant, who opened their facility for the use of the responders for food, bathroom use, and other comforts. Secondly, I would like to congratulate all the winners from the recent elections. We will have some new faces working in some offices as we go into 2024, but I am equally thankful for those electees who were returned to office, and I would like to thank them for their previous services. Third, I would like to thank Superintendent Jason Wood, the faculty and staff of the Patrick County Public School System, and the school board for diligent work in providing Patrick County with the award-winning school system with which we are blessed. A school system of this caliber is not achieved without extraordinary effort. Fourth, I would like to take this opportunity to welcome our new county administrator, Beth Sims, and to applaud her efforts in dealing with unusual challenges during her first month on the job. I look forward to working with Ms. Sims in various capacities as we transition into 2024. Thanks are also due to Rick Ward and Gary Clifton for maintaining the excellent quality of our county library branch and continuing to staff it with knowledgeable, helpful, and friendly staff. Last but not least, I would like to thank the outgoing supervisors for their service to the county and express my hope that they will continue to hold the best interests of the county in their minds and hearts, and that they will support the new supervisors as they take the reins. Let me finish by thanking the voters of Patrick County for their participation in the recent election and hope that voter turnout will improve as we go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Next will be Mr. Galen Gilbert from Peters Creek District.
Are you fine? Hello, I guess most of y'all know me, I'm Galen Gilbert. I'm from the, was Mayo, but now I'm in the Peters Creek District. And I'm just back to visit the same problem we're having in the Patrick Springs area with the intersection of Spring Road and 58. We just had another recent wreck down there the other day that took the lights down, and they have not got them back up yet, and then last night, we had another wreck there. So it's just a constant problem of what are we going to do? Right now, the warning lights are interoperable because they were knocked down, they've not got them wired in yet. They done a study in that area probably four or five years ago about daylighting it and fixing the curves, and none of that's been done yet. And for y'all that come through that area, it's dark down there at night, and I mean, very dark. And there are so many places to turn, it's just a very dangerous situation. I know we've talked about a stoplight, and some of them said, "Well, there's not enough sight distance," but it's no difference than the Walmart stoplighting is at Patrick Springs. And I've talked with the new county administrator, and I was very pleased talking with her and everything, and she's going to look into a few things, but I just thought I'd bring it back to y'all's attention again that something's got to happen before somebody else gets killed down there because we've had a lot of people lose their life. And, you know, you just can't afford to do that. So I don't know what the fix for that will be, but something's got to be done. Thank y'all for your time.
Thank you. And next, we have Mr. Ed Poole, Lewis District.
Good evening, everybody. My name's Ed Poole. I just wanted, I made a submission, I think you guys had in your packets, that I hope everybody had a chance to read. And for the general public, as far as the solar panels go, what I've asked the board is if they would consider maybe adopting a toxic chemical ordinance so we don't get into industrial applicants in these constant isolated fights. They sure take a lot of, I know they take a lot of your time, they certainly have taken a lot of my time in preparing this, this information for you. And I'm submitting all of this as a certified safety and health trainer authorized by the Occupational Safety and Health Administration. So I'm a licensed trainer from OSHA. The one thing I did that's kind of new that I was able to dig up, and I did put it in your letter, was from Dr. Lenning Tinker. And he's the program manager for the photovoltaics team, Department of Energy, Office of Energy Efficiency and Renewable Energy. And he's made in print the comment on whether panels leak or not. And his answer is that creating a solar module that stays perfectly sealed for its entire lifetime is impractical. And I think that kind of, it's about all I can provide for you folks. It's just the data, the decisions are yours. I hope I've been able to get you some good unbiased data that you can make some decisions on. That's all I have. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ed. And next, we have Mr. Vance A.T., Blue Ridge.
Good evening. Appreciate everything y'all do. My general subject matter is economic development for Patrick County. And I'm all for it, and all of my friends and family and colleagues of Patrick County are all in favor for growing the county of Patrick in the Commonwealth of Virginia. As it relates specifically to solar farming, I think Ed Poole has done a great job of digging up the facts. We would strongly encourage, regardless of resolution, ordinances, or whatever the term is called, is make a decision. We would like to impose a decision to be tabled to forego the existing technology that is proposed because it represents 7% of the technology out there that is highly toxic to the environment and human health. Period, it's in the top 20, if not the top 10, but we'll get the specific number of all-time toxic compounds. If we decide to table this one and get it off the table, there's 93% better, safer technology to develop this property for solar farming, which the funding is out there for such. So we would just say, let's make it simple. Move forward to 93% better technology, safer technology to protect Patrick County and the citizens and the natural resources of Patrick County. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Vance. We start with Mr. Simmons, if we have any comments on the.
I have none.
Mr. Logue?
I appreciate everything that was brought to our attention. I do agree that Spring Road and 58, I would like to see a stoplight there, that is a dangerous intersection.
Mr. Wolf?
Thank everyone for your coming.
That's very.
And I guess my main comment would be on that stoplight at Spring Road. I had an aunt that got killed there too. She was one of the several that got killed there. And I definitely think it needs to be a stoplight for my part, so we'll get Beth to look into that and see what we can come up with. Thank y'all. Thank everybody spoke. Thank you, Vance, and Kurt, Galen, and let me see who I missed. Mr. Poole. Okay, thank you all. And we'll close public comment.
All right, new business, looks like Mr. Evans and Mr. Calvin Davis Enterprise Fleet. Update on lease agreement?
All right. While Amy's getting everything pulled up, just some quick intros. I know it's a lot of new faces and new faces on our end as well. I'm Calvin Davis, I'm the new area sales manager of the Virginia Territory. So cover all the territory support, our sales team. We have about 170 clients in Virginia that we partner with and help them manage their fleets more efficiently. And this is Austin Evans, he's your account manager. So as we talk about fleet planning, strategy, industry updates, selling vehicles, he's the main point of contact, he's meeting with the team that you all have that manages the fleet. All right. So I got a few slides in here, some of it is more of a summary, some of them we're going to skim through. Want to just brief you on where we're at so far, recent updates, value add. And then I have some in here just to field questions. Obviously, there's a lot of new faces, new moving parts. So just to kind of reflect back on just Enterprise as a whole. We recently rebranded, not sure if you all have seen some of the new communications, but we're no longer Enterprise Rental Car, Enterprise Holdings. We're Enterprise Mobility, which is encompassing our vision, is to be able to help out from a total transportation provider. So whether it's rental, truck needs, car needs, fleet management, we want to be a one-stop shop. So our new name is just to kind of set that vision. We're one of the largest private-owned companies. We're ran by a third-generation owner, Chrissy Taylor. So she's doing a fantastic job of just outlining the vision that she has for what we want to do in the U.S. and globally. And we just recently, from an Enterprise Fleet perspective, became the largest fleet management company provider. So that was recent as of 2022. So as we touched on a few things today, I do want to reflect back on some opportunities that we have too, and just from a full scope. These are all the products and services that we offer. They are à la carte, so as you all partner with us from a new company or existing company, you can leverage them as needed. Some of the areas that we are helping out the county of Patrick is on the acquisition side, the funding side. We're helping license title the vehicles, any accessory add-ons. We're also selling vehicles for you all. But as opportunity comes up, as some of the pushes initiatives from electric vehicle standpoint and just industry updates, we want to be able to support you in any avenue that you all explore. So as we look at the original plan, a lot of this was focused on the police vehicles, so just want to kind of reflect on where we started at and as we progressed moving forward. So as you can see here, we really had initiated a 10-year model of what it would look like to partner with Enterprise based on, at that time, the data that we had from you all. So we were focused on 22 vehicles, and they were mainly the police vehicles, and it was based on a budget that you all had given us in 2021. As you can see, we had a purchase price or purchase budget amount, Cap X, of around $33,000. So one of the reasons why you partner with Enterprise was for two things. One, to figure out how we can maximize your dollars. So being able to work within your budget, and as you grew the budget, being able to, again, grow the partnership and get more vehicles. And the second was the operational side, being able to reduce some of the operational costs. Because at that time, you were averaging around an 18-year cycle. And what that meant is that when you purchased a vehicle, you held on it for, held on to it for 18 years before you were able to replace it. So you were averaging around one vehicle per year from a budget perspective when we started it, and the goal was to grow it. Now, a large part, things have changed. This was at the height of COVID when we started the partnership. So budget dollars were cut, there was limited funds. So as we've grown and been able to reassess it through different types of funds we were allocated, we've been able to grow that partnership. So we've deviated a little bit from the plan, and it's largely due to all the disruption. And this is one of the value adds, is being your industry expert. We don't expect you all to know about what's happening in the automotive industry. We don't expect you all to be able to navigate it. That's why you partner with us, is to be able to give you the information, digest it, and guide you on the best routes to go. As we look at overall in the industry, some of the things that we've seen is supply chain shortages from raw materials to chip shortages, labor shortages, transportation shortages. So there's been a lot of disruption, which has had a. demand in production. Government unfortunately have taken the biggest blow because they've, you all had notoriously from the past been able to acquire vehicles at the lowest dollar point than anybody. And because of that, a lot of dealerships and manufacturers moved towards focusing on retail because they can maximize their returns and their profits. So you all haven't had as much allocation or availability as we've normally seen in the past, which has led to when we order vehicles, it's taken longer than usual. Pre-pandemic, it would take three months. Now it's taken eight months, 12 months. And we're also seeing the price point on these vehicles changes. So you're not seeing the VSA contract, Sourcewell pricing that you typically would see. It's based on if you need a vehicle, you're going to pay the market demands. So our partnership has been able to work around some of these obstacles and navigate them as best as possible as has been applicable. So there's two avenues that I want to talk about where we're providing value at for you all. That's the acquisition and the funding area. The first is acquisition. So when you look at acquiring vehicles, we have three options that you can leverage. The first is we order directly through the manufacturer. This is the best option, the cheapest option. You customize a vehicle however you want, and the manufacturer takes your order, they process it, and it usually takes around six months for them to build it and deliver it. The second is taking advantage of dealer inventory. So our network of 150,000 dealers that we have across the U.S., we can pull from that inventory to be able to acquire vehicles. It's the fastest way to get a vehicle, but you typically are stuck with the standard options that are on that vehicle and on the lot. And then the third way is recent and new, is through our internal network. So we have thousands of clients all across the country that have ordered vehicles and either had no longer a need for the vehicle, or they ordered multiples than what they wanted. And so we now have that inventory that we can pull from, which capitalizes on the best of both worlds for option one and two. You get it at the lowest price, and then you also get it faster. So we've been able to leverage all these options, and I'll highlight how we've been able to do that for yours fleet. The next is the flexible financing option. So if you click it one more time, one more time, one more time, there we go. So there's three options there as well. I like to make the joke, we're green for a reason. We want to be able to help you out however you want, whether it's pay cash, finance the vehicle, or do a lease. If you're paying cash, it's just working within a budget. There's times where you've had to pay cash for a vehicle, and you got to get rid of the funds. We've been able to accommodate that. If you're financing the vehicle, it just allows you to do more within that budget. And then if you capitalize on the open-ended leases, which is what majority of your vehicles are on, which is no wear and tear, no mileage restriction, but allows you to pay for a portion of the vehicle. So instead of paying for 100% of that vehicle, you pay for 80%. And at the end of that term, which is in your case, five years, you have the option to extend it out, or we can turn it in, sell it for more than that remaining balance, and then take the profits applied to a new vehicle, which ultimately lowers your top line number that you're paying for the vehicle. So just want to pause right here, see if there's any questions so far. Perfect. So if you go to the next slide, as you look at the vehicles that you currently have through us, we currently, in the two-year timeframe, have been able to acquire 13 total vehicles, mixture of 2021 through 2023. Some of the interesting things from the value adds that I just touched on is that we've used all three methods when it came to acquisition. So we've been able to order it at the lowest price point. We've been proactive. So we've had time to pay the lowest invoice cost, and it's taken around six to 10 months for you all to take possession of the vehicles. We've gotten them from the dealer inventory. So if we need a vehicle right away for whatever the situation, total loss, or just immediate need for growth higher, we've been able to capitalize on that. And then we most recently acquired a minivan from our internal inventory that was available in another state that we was able to capitalize on. Oh, go back, sorry. The second thing is just our scope. Again, we're not restricted to dealers in Virginia. Obviously, we want to keep as much business in-house as possible. But when we do need a vehicle, we have the ability to go outside of state. So you can see some vehicles was acquired through the Virginia contract, and then there was others that we acquired from North Carolina, Tennessee, and Massachusetts. So if the vehicle's out there, we're going to increase the radius, especially when you need the vehicle, to be able to find that vehicle for you. As you look at cost-wise, right now, you're averaging around $83,000 total for 13 vehicles, which on that original plan is right in line with what we anticipated. The only difference is we haven't sold as many vehicles as we thought we would. The goal was turn in 13, replace 13, just with the conditions of COVID and the impacts and holding on to some vehicles. We haven't been able to do that. But we are in the process of turning in some more vehicles, which I was touching on in a second. But looking at that budget, if you equate that to the one vehicle that we had, you're averaging around 13 vehicles for the cost of three vehicles if we were to purchase them. So again, it's working within the budget, getting as many vehicles as possible, which is ultimately going to lower your maintenance costs. Your average mileage is around 10,000 miles per year, which equates to around $100, $200 in maintenance total because you're only needing an oil change and tire rotation. So just look at the biggest area opportunity for some of those vehicles was some of those vehicles being aged outside of warranty, needing big-ticket repairs. And now these vehicles are newer, safer, more reliable. As we look at the end of term, because we're only paying for 80% of the vehicle, there's $66,000 that is not tied up currently because we're not financing it down to zero or paying cash. So if you equate that to vehicle costs, it's about two vehicles that we've been able to save. And again, at the end of term, you have the flexibility to extend it out if that vehicle is trending low in mileage. We're going to put together the financial models. We'll show it to everyone that needs to be in the room and just to see, hey, what does it look like to replace this vehicle? Can we ultimately lower our costs? Or is it smarter to keep this vehicle in the fleet, run it, move it to a different department? Just touch on this quickly, but as we look at support services, there are a number of services that we offer. I think the biggest area opportunity that we're going to be pushing for over the next 12 months is implementing the maintenance program. Part of getting you off the vehicle in the vehicle game is taking that off your plate. So being able to track the data, have the data on our data warehouse, our portal online that you have access to, and can see what you're spending on a per-vehicle basis. This allows us to make better financial recommendations for when we should replace a vehicle, especially some of the older ones in the fleet. So as we look to take that off your plate, that is something that we've been able to negotiate with the Sourcewell contract. So we are the sole provider when it comes to fleet management on Sourcewell, and they have negotiated pricing for all of our services. So maintenance being one of them, where we can implement our maintenance program, provide that oversight, and make sure the right repair is being done on the right vehicle.
Is that the telematics that you're referencing?
So that is the maintenance program. So taking it to the shops, our team will approve it on your behalf. We review it. If it's not in line with what the manufacturer recommends, we can decline it. So we can provide savings in that area and negotiate on pricing. As we look at some of the electric vehicle pushes, while we're not there yet, we have been being the leading provider when it comes to that. We just rolled out the largest EV fleet in Domino's as a partnership. So we've been getting a lot of information. And again, as you all have the demand for it, we're here to support you. So it's more so just a nugget that, hey, if it comes, and hopefully it doesn't come soon, we're going to help you navigate through it. Last piece, and probably the biggest piece, the secret formula to running an efficient fleet is the selling of vehicles. Again, the goal is to pay the lowest top line dollar for it and then sell it at the highest point, which overall lowers your total cost of owning the vehicle. As you look at the current market, right now, we're experiencing record-breaking numbers. So it's the perfect time to sell a vehicle. I'm not sure if anybody sold any personal vehicles recently, but you're probably getting a good, a good return on them. Right now, the market is 109% above the industry average, which means some people are selling it for double what they typically would in a normal market. It's supposed to be this strong for the next 12 months, so it's a perfect time to capitalize on it. Again, talking with Sheriff, we got some vehicles that we're going to be selling for you all here soon to be able to maximize on it. And then in the next 12 months, we might see it start to stabilize. It's not really a bad thing because we've experienced record-breaking numbers, but it may be 20% above the market versus 109. As we look at three vehicles that we've sold totaling the partnership, it's been a 2013 Dodge Charger, 2015 Ford Explorer, and a 2018 Nissan Frontier. So if you look at that Frontier at a retail price, you're paying around $29,000 for that vehicle. And we were able to sell it five years later for about 50% of what you paid for. So again, the power of equity and power of capitalizing on a resale market ultimately allows us to lower your total cost. The next few slides are more just industry updates, so we can touch on them, we can field it for Q and A. But again, the value add is just being able to navigate the industry. This one is probably the most important out of all the other ones I have in there, and it just kind of outlines just how we're seeing an increase year-over-year in allocation given for vehicles. You can see governments in the middle, they probably had the lowest amount of allocation given to them, but we are seeing it increase. So we've seen a 37% increase year-over-year in inventory. So we're improving. It's still not where it should be in comparison to commercial and retail, but we're starting to see more vehicles available, more vehicles at dealerships. Now, we haven't seen the trickle-down effect of the UAW strike, but that's something to keep in mind, and again, we're here to navigate that for you. This is just a comparison of ordering a vehicle versus getting it from the dealership. Again, just the benefit of if we can be proactive, the goal is to help you all get from reactive to proactive to an elite fleet. Right now, we're in the phase of proactiveness. So we're planning, this is the perfect time to look at budget numbers, what's out there, what your needs are going to be, so we can start the conversation. And then, again, just like to have the information. This is just, as you see, the increase in the demand for electric vehicles is increasing, is higher than it's ever been. The manufacturers are seeing, having bigger push. The government mandates are pushing for it. You're seeing more commercials for it. So it's out there, it's coming. The infrastructure is being worked on. They're closing a lot of commercial plants and moving them to government plants. So the more that we can start having open and honest conversations about what that looks like and what's out there and available, the more efficient we'll be if we have to make that transition. And then just more so segmented towards the sheriff vehicles. We're starting to see vehicle types change. So for example, they're no longer making the Dodge Charger. I know they've gone away from the Chevy Impala. You're seeing a lot of sedans go away. Right now, the only police-rated vehicles are the Durango, the pickup truck, and the Ford Interceptor. Those are one of, three of the more expensive vehicle types that are out there. So as we look at, you know, budgeting and planning, that's going to have to increase just based on the demand and what's out there. And then as they stop making more sedans, they're moving towards producing more EV pursuit-rated vehicles, which is starting to see the big push for EV is on the police side and the sheriff's side. So I think that was the last slide. So any, any questions?
Do you all sell the vehicles at Manheim, like dealer-only auctions?
So we, we sell wholesale, but auction is usually our second or third route. Because of the enterprise network, we plug it into that infrastructure of us selling a million vehicles, and we actually hand-sell to dealers.
Looking at any other markets, so aside from, say, law enforcement, maybe emergency management, those heavy-duty trucks?
So we can do anything under CDL. I know the big push has been ambulance, those type of vehicles. Now, we're not in that space yet, but we are working to get there. I mean, if you look at the police vehicles, we just got into that market five to seven years ago. So we're constantly just evaluating. We want to do the best analysis just to make sure it makes sense and how we can help you all.
Do you have any timeframe, if you have any timeframe that you've learned of on these electric vehicles?
The timeframe changes. I've heard 2030 being the most consistent one. It honestly all depends on some of the plans, what manufacturer. I know with the UAW strike, they actually halted a lot of the EV conversations because of production being back and not having the workers to be able to produce these vehicles. So that 2030 could be moved to 2035. But we're seeing a big push at that 2030 mark.
But that's all the questions we got?
Awesome.
Appreciate y'all coming in.
Yeah, thank you for the time.
We'll be looking for you again about the budget time though. Got off-center. That's it, that's it on Enterprise. Next one. Is that Amy Dada? Trying to pronounce your name, Christopher Dada?
Dada, yes, yes, sir. Thank you. As you mentioned, I'm from Guinwaddell, which serves the county attorney in Patrick County. Have a little bit of a discussion, talk about solar non-zone areas, but I hope to address any questions you all may have after I give my brief comments. As you, as you know, Virginia is a deal-in-rule state, which means counties have the authority to do what's been explicitly granted to them or is necessarily implicated as being necessary as part of those provided duties, powers. The way the General Assembly has generally delegated those land use authority is through your zoning ordinance. There's a whole statutory scheme as it relates to zoning ordinances. So typically, the way you have seen utility-scale solar regulated is through a zoning ordinance. Now, Patrick County does not have zoning, and that's not highly unusual for rural county. It does leave you less options on how to regulate solar development. Really, 15.2-2232 review is really your only meaningful way to regulate solar development on your own. There's also provision for a siting agreement, where the county may negotiate with a sole developer and put together an agreement as to how the utility-scale development will progress. It can be very detailed in terms of the project itself, the financial terms involved, but that is a conversation, a negotiation, if you will. In terms of imposing approval or denial, the 15.2-2232 review is the main opportunity county has to unilaterally regulate utility-scale solar. Even kind of traditionally, 2232 reviews have been considered to be a big-picture view of a project. If you look at the statute, it talks about the general or approximate location of a feature. So traditionally, as you've seen in your comprehensive plan, the language will be broader, not as detailed as you may see in a zoning ordinance. Now, you all have adopted and amended your comprehensive plan and incorporated a policy on siting development, for which, you know, we commend you in terms of, you know, that's a best practice in terms of providing guidance for that review. But traditionally speaking, that's where review has not been as detailed as a zoning ordinance. Even if you compare your comprehensive plan and your policy, you'll see it probably may be shorter than zoning ordinances in other counties. For example, we serve as county attorney of Franklin County, and I've worked on their solar ordinance. As you probably know, they have non-zoned areas and zoned areas. So they have a very robust zoning ordinance as it relates to solar. Now, each county has their prerogative of how detailed they want to do their zoning In terms of statutory scheme, there are exemptions to a 2232 review. The siting agreement, for example, should a county enter into a siting agreement, approve it after a public hearing, the code provides that automatically satisfies a 2232 review. The statute also provides if you have zoning and you allow a utility-scale solar by right, no such review is necessary. no such review is necessary. So there are exemptions to a 2232 review, but the contours of a 2232 review in candor is not as well defined as a zoning ordinance. You have a whole statutory scheme as it relates to zoning ordinances that discusses the powers of counties. You also, as you probably are not surprised to hear, you have a lot of litigation. So there's a lot of case law on zoning ordinances. There's very little case law on 2232 review. So the bounds of that review have not been fully tested as they have in a zoning ordinance. And no matter what regulation you have, whether it's 2232 review, whether it's a zoning ordinance, there are certain preemptions that may occur, whether it's federal law, federal regulations, state law, state regulation. You don't have unfettered regulatory powers even for zoning ordinance. Uh, for example, no matter if you approve a utility scale project through 2232, S U P, or by right, there will be D E Q permits involved. And nothing the county can do can, you can't let a project move forward, you can't supersede D U Q and make movie go forward, no matter how much you may want the project. Um, so no matter what tools you have available, they're not unlimited regardless. And, and that's really, um, the extent of what I had kind of prepared, because I was hoping more for Q and A. Um, I figured you may have some questions, given some of the projects may have come up or questions that have come up from the public that I could address, and I'm happy to.
I have a question. Say that the board doesn't vote for any solar company to come, will the state or the federal government mandate and say, you've got to accept?
That's a little bit predicting the future, but my best guess is two things may occur. Um, and that's just based on my own experience and, and the industry is, I expect there to be some lobbying, and there always is some going on. Uh, but the greater risk, I tell my clients is, you, you run the risk of litigation. Um, if you do an outright ban, which I think your question entails is, you know, that may prompt a lawsuit, that may be worthwhile for someone to litigate that, an outright ban. Um, there's no specific case law on solar as it relates to that, so I can't tell you the answer for sure, but I do anticipate probably litigation. And if not, um, I do know there are already pushes to preempt some, the authority of localities to regulate solar.
Is there any deadline? Like, I mean, we were all new to this maybe a year ago, and our planning commission just did the ordinance. Is there any deadline? I mean, we need to amend some things, you know? We still need to, I think, think of, of other things like Mr. Moore brought forward and things of that sort. Um, if we have a, a company that come and submits an application, can we still continue to amend?
You may, uh, prior, you, you can't amend and go back to prior projects, but yes, you can amend, that's an ongoing process, that's not unusual. Um, in terms of timelines, it unfortunately is out of your hands to some extent because of General Assembly. In some instances, already in the zoning ordinance, your powers to regulate solar are restricted in some areas. Not as much in utility scale, but residential, for example, there are specific statutes that even the zoning ordinance, for example, residential, just on their roof, you're very restricted where you can regulate on that. Agricultural, if they have solar that's purely for purposes of their property or joint parcels, you're also restricted in that. So in terms of timeline, it really depends what General Assembly can do. In some instances, the General Assembly has said, well, the locality has not adopted something, here's the default. But in other instances, the General Assembly has said, no, here's moving forward, you can't do X, Y, or Z.
Can we have, like we have the enterprise zones for economic development, can we have just solar zones and forget doing residential, commercial, industrial zoning and things of that sort? Can we just do one for solar zoning?
Without adopting any zoning?
Yes. Just adopt, like the enterprise zone for economic development, just adopt a solar zone.
Looks like that would get into too much.
Yeah, I think that.
I mean.
That would be a little complicated, I'd have to do a little more digging on that.
If you move forward zoning, it would pretty much have to be across the board, you're now a zoning locality, right?
Generally speaking.
And I mean, that's, I don't know if any of us want that, but I don't know, moving forward in the future, that might be what it comes to, to protect us more, right?
Yeah, I'm not advocating pro or against zoning, or certainly not pro or against solar, but it does give you more tools. Unfortunately, I mean, for better or worse, it does give you more tools. Um, you can get really granular, um, and it, it probably one of the biggest benefits I've seen from my clients is it provides a lot of guidance to your planning commissions, to your boards. They know what your priorities are, they have it all spelled out, uh, gives guidance to, um, you know, on the solar farm, on the solar industry obviously gives guidance to those companies as to what your requirements are, and they can decide whether they're interested in coming to this county or not. Um, in other industries, it also gives them guidance as to what the local requirements are. But yes, it certainly does give you more tools. Cause even, like I say, even the comprehensive plan, it is untested. Um, if you don't have a long history of very detailed comp plan reviews, I mean, I'll tell you some planning commissions, you know, are unsure of how to deal with very detailed comp plan reviews because they haven't done them in the past. Um, they, they may have seen, you know, S U Ps, those they're used to, but comp plan reviews that are very detailed, a lot of conditions, a lot of moving parts, a lot of restrictions, that's new to a lot of folks.
One question. All right, well.
Well, I appreciate, and I know we're moving forward, I'm sure we'll be in conversations with Beth, with the board, with your staff on any amendments, and I'm always happy to do a closed session as well, if, if at some point in time that's appropriate.
Thank you.
I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
All right, appreciate it. And I, and I forgot to mention, Beth called my attention to it, that the solar thing tonight will just be a presentation to everybody and the board, it won't be a take question type thing. We'll have a public hearing later and, and be able to do a lot of that.
And no decision tonight?
No, no decision either, there won't be no vote on it. Not no time soon, I hope, but anyway. All right, and we'll go ahead with the presentation. And what was your name? Grayson, did I say it right? Grayson Drani?
Grayson is my coworker. If it's okay, my name is Dominica Sink. I'm with Energix. Um, I'm a senior director of development at Energix. Uh, so thank you for your time, thank you for inviting me tonight to share some information about our company, uh, about the project that we're proposing. Um, and I definitely, I hear you, this is not a Q and A, but if you have any questions for me, I'm happy to answer throughout this presentation. So with me tonight, I have, uh, our counsel, Scott Foster with Gentry Lock, and, and Grayson is also here tonight, in, in case there are any questions. Uh, so Energix, uh, we are a global company. Our US headquarters are in Arlington, Virginia. We have engineering headquarters in Roanoke. As part of the global company, we have assets in the US, uh, but our parent company is located in Tel Aviv, Israel. That's where we're publicly traded on the stock exchange. We have operations in Israel, in Poland, and in the US. And US is our primary market, is our main growth market. We employ over 90 people in the US. We've invested over $1 billion in American energy infrastructure, and we're very proud of that. We have an American-made policy, uh, we, majority of our equipment comes from American manufacturers, American, American companies, and that goes from the solar panels to the steel products, wiring, and any component on our sites. Currently, we have 10 operational projects in Virginia. Um, I have a map on the next slide where we can show they span across entire Virginia, and six more projects under construction right now with our first project, uh, in construction in Pennsylvania. So the 10 operational projects in Virginia, first one in construction in Pennsylvania, and we have, uh, projects in development in Virginia, in Pennsylvania, West Virginia, and Kentucky. So this is a map of our projects. Uh, we have two operational sites in Henry County, two more starting construction in the next few weeks. Uh, we have projects in, in with County, city of Chesapeake, town of Mount Jackson, Prince William, so really coverage all over Virginia. Um, and the 240 megawatts that this represents, that's approximately 30,000 homes that will be powered with that energy. So about Fairystone Solar, um, we're located off of Commerce Drive. Uh, the capacity for this project, uh, as proposed is 12 megawatts. That's approximately enough to power 2,000 homes. The project is located, the entire parcel associated with the project is over 200 acres, but we're going to be using a fraction of that. So we're right now anticipating to be using around 100 acres. Um, and in terms of benefits to Patrick County, um, this land right now produces over $6,000 annually in taxes. With proposed project, um, that revenue would be 40,000, so that's six times the amount. And over anticipated lifetime, the project would yield over $2.4 million, and that's approximately 40 years. Um, and we have gone through the 20232 review, so the comprehensive plan review, um, the planning commission recommend, approved that. Um, there are several things that we're voluntarily proposing through our siting agreement, which is being proposed with the Board of Supervisors. Those same conditions, we have voluntarily presented in our comprehensive plan. And as we look at the design, I'm going to go through, uh, the items that we voluntarily proposed. And the reason for that is, we understand there's no zoning, so we wanted to make sure that we provide some guard lit, guardrails, some, um, minimum guidelines for us to follow so that you all know what project is coming to your community. Uh, so one feature that we're providing is, uh, minimum distance from nearby properties, from roads, so we proposed 50-foot setback from property lines. We're maintaining existing vegetation where it's available. In other areas where there is no existing vegetation, we're going to be planting additional trees to provide for screening for nearby landowners or for, for folks traveling down Commerce Drive. We've, um, spoken with one of the neighbors, um, they're communically positioned where they would be exposed to, uh, to the project. So we met with them, we spoke with them, we changed our plans, we increased the setback so that there's no real close residential dwelling to the project. Um, and in, in their case, it's over 1,000 feet that we're able to move the project to accommodate for their view shed.
Quick question about the existing vegetation. So let's say, you know, talking about our, uh, cosmetically, what we can see, uh, so this time of year, hardwoods, leaves falling off the trees, so during the summer, you may not be able to, but, so is that something you would adjust? So if it's like a hardwood tree line, you would change it out for something a little more year round?
Absolutely, we'll be happy to work with the county.
Thank you.
So just a, a little bit about the comprehensive plan review we went through, uh, so the project will have no impact to surface or groundwater, we're outside of flood zones, um, we're near, uh, we're in an area where there's already existing industrial development, we're near, um, transfer station, uh, Sheriff's Department office, um, so this is a, a location where there already is some commercial industrial use. Uh, and the project will produce no noise, odor, pollution, or any long-term increased traffic. The only traffic will be experienced during construction and decommissioning of the project, and that will be temporary. Uh, that, the, the period of time that construction takes for a project of this size or decommissioning would be about six months. And additional thing, which is very unique to solar, uh, it really preserves land for future land uses. So this property, we're not purchasing it, we are going to be leasing it from the current landowner. So the landowner will, uh, maintain this, the ownership of this property, our leases for a certain period of time. So after that lease expires, we will either have the option to renegotiate with the landowner, and if that landowner does not want to pursue that any further, then we will decommission, remove the project, and in that case, the landowner can pursue any other type of development. This is again, a representation of the revenues, so this is a mix of, um, real estate taxes, and, um, I think through the siting agreement, we've been discussing revenue share, M and T taxes, trying to make sure we understand which revenue scheme is better for the county. And that over 40 years represents almost 2 and a half million dollars, uh, which if we compared the projected taxes with solar to the taxes without the solar project, so current land use, that's about 11 times the difference for the duration. Here's a little bit more about the voluntary commitments. Uh, so as I mentioned, uh, it will be developed in conformity with the comprehensive plan. We're providing voluntary setbacks, uh, we're providing voluntary vegetative buffers and screening, um, with the fencing of the project being located internal to the buffers. So the neighbors or passerby's will not see the metal fencing, they will see first the vegetation, and then the fencing will be behind it. Uh, that fencing will be done in accordance with National Electric Code. Additional items, um, is again, we're here for the first time, it's the first solar project, we want to talk a little bit about the process that we go through. So on the bottom, uh, we outlined other surveys that we go through, other studies, other government agencies and bodies that we work with. So we work with Department of Environmental Quality on the permit, that's called Permit by Rule. That permit requires us to go through extensive desktop as well as field surveys where we, uh, work on finding any cultural resources, historic resources, threatened endangered species, and then we consult with their sister agencies, so, uh, Department of Conservation, um, wildlife, historic resources. So we show the findings, and we try to make sure that we don't impact any resources. Um, after that is done, and, and we've spoken with all the agencies, and they don't have any concerns, we are granted permit by rule. Um, in addition, we delineate wetlands and streams. If there are any stream crossings, then we will work with, uh, Army Corps of Engineers. Um, and there's a second permit, we work with D U Q on, just like any type of construction, um, erosion sediment control, stormwater management, uh, we also go to D U Q, uh, we follow all the rules that any other type of construction would, so, um, salt fences, stormwater basins, temporary vegetation, long-term vegetation. A lot of that is also applicable to our projects. Um, and in addition, um, I have some photos later on that show what it looks like to be inside a solar project, with essentially is a meadow with the equipment on top of it. Uh, we've also started incorporating pollinator mixes to increase diversity, uh, of our projects.
Have you all collected any data, uh, like pre and post, uh, any kind of hazardous materials in the soil or any effects on the streams a year out, five years out, or however long?
We do, um, environmental phase one, that's a requirement for us, where we look at anything, um, that's on the site, um, and then we're required to, you know, either avoid certain resources, remediate it. Um, there is nothing really associated with the project's operations that would, um, introduce toxicity or contamination, and I do have more information about that later, specifically as I know there's been, um, different information circling around about the technology and what solar panels are made out of and how they, um, kind of interact with the environment. So I'm happy to provide that. We haven't done that testing, um, but there are, this technology specifically has been in use for over 25 years, 250 million solar panels from this company, this technology deployed worldwide, uh, and there have been tests, there is a federal-owned facility in Golden, Colorado, um, there's a very big project out west, uh, they had hurricane damage to hundreds of panels, hundreds, thousands of panels, and there was soil sampling and water sampling, and they never detect anything hazardous. There's a project that's built on the drinking water reservoir for the city of Berlin, similarly, no issues.
Great, thank you.
And, um, additional commitment that is really important to us, uh, we work with communities and localities to ensure that after the project... and localities to ensure that after the project is up with its useful lifetime, if the landowner doesn't elect to extend the lease, what happens then? We want to make sure that the burden is not on the county, it is on us. So we prepare decommissioning plan that is done by a third-party engineer. It is updated every five years to keep it with current conditions. With that plan, we also provide a decommissioning estimate. So how expensive will it be to decommission the project? That is also updated every five years to account for changes in the industry, inflation. And then in that amount that is specified to be the decommissioning cost, we will provide a surety. And most commonly, that will be a bond, will be issued to the county to ensure that if energy goes out of business, anything unpredictable happens, there is still the fallback plan where the county is able to pull the funds to initiate decommissioning. And that would apply end of useful lifetime, or if something happens throughout. So year 10, year 15, if something happens, then the county has that option as well. And as we mentioned, in addition to the comprehensive plan, we've proposed siting agreement that provides protection for a lot of the items we've discussed, clarifies the minimal requirements for this project. But we also wanted to participate and contribute to the community. It's been really great to interact with everybody in Patrick County. The Planning Commission has been great, community members, we talked about the project, and a few neighbors that have spoken with us. So we hope we can support the county's budget with a voluntary additional payment of $100,000. And that would be when the project starts construction. I think this is repetitive, so I'm just going to skip it. I know this is a long presentation. I'll skip that one too. Thank you. So more about the erosion sediment control. As mentioned, we're required to go through DEQ. We're not allowed legally to change the flow of water from before the proposed solar project. So that is the DEQ standard. There are several layers of this review. Counties usually participate, so you all also have the ability to review our plans. And the vegetation that we use is per DEQ handbook. So the requirement is for us to have the site vegetated, temporary vegetation during construction, long-term vegetation during operations. And those are specific grass mixes that are deep-rooted, they can hold the soil, prevent erosion, and they absorb water to prevent any runoff of the water. And here are just examples of some of our sites, and different erosion sediment control stormwater measures that we use. So on the left, there's root wrap to slow down velocity of the stormwater flow. On the right, there's a conveyance ditch that has been graded and seeded, lined with matting, also to prevent erosion, and to allow the vegetation to grow, to stabilize the soils. And on left, additional measures, we have flexumet to further stabilize the ditch. On the right, we have graded ditch and lined with matting, installed check dams and silt stocks. And some of the items that we include in our design are above and beyond the DEQ regulations. And this is what I've been referencing earlier, so this is what it looks like inside a solar farm. Well, you essentially have grass meadow, and you have the equipment on top. It really helps with the soils, helps with biodiversity. You know, when we go for the first time to some communities, people have this notion that it's going to be a parking lot with solar panels on top of it, and that is not the case. Here a little bit about the equipment, so what comes into a solar project. So first, we have solar panels. Then we have racking, the metal racking, it's embedded in posts that go into the ground. And then we have inverters and transformers. So the solar panels produce direct current energy. Our grid operates on alternating current. So inverter's job is to convert that DC energy to AC energy. And the inverters are the only component that has the possibility to emit noise. It's equivalent to the HVAC unit. So usually, the design practices are to locate inverters internal to the project, at least 150 feet from property lines, because that is the distance at which you would hear that decibel rating. And here on the right, this is what we call point of interconnection. So how do we connect the project to the grid? Projects that are 20 megawatts or less, as the case for this project, we only require five power poles. So five new utility poles of this type, so not the big towers, will be added for this project to connect to the grid. Projects that are more than 20 megawatts, that's when the voltage is higher, and that's when we start to design substation and have essentially a substation added onto the grid. But this project will not require that. And here, I want to take a moment to talk about the technology that we use. So First Solar, it's a uniquely American technology. It's a shame that there's a lot of misinformation out there, just to give you a perspective. Among all the solar panel manufacturers around the world, 5% globally for solar panels, 50% in the US for solar panels. This is a technology that's protected by patents. In the top 10 manufacturers, only one American company, the rest are Chinese. So this is an American manufacturing success story. In business for over 25 years, 250 million panels installed. And it's installed from government institutions, schools, ocean, naval, airbase uses this technology. We've been using it for years because this is the higher-quality equipment. This is American-made, has been tried and tested. There's other 50 researchers worldwide that have tested these technologies, and that's from universities to federal laboratories. So here we have a quote from recent study, 2019, from Virginia Tech, from the Colton Energy Research Center at Virginia Tech. "The panels pose little to no risk under normal operating conditions and foreseeable accidents such as fire, breakage, extreme weather events like tornadoes and hurricanes." This is the same conclusion that consistently appears across all the 50 researchers. There also is research from a federal organization, National Renewable Energy Laboratory. They are the ones that actually have solar facility, Golden, Colorado, so they've been able to do that testing on the facility that they have. So this is a safe technology, and I know we talk about normal operating conditions. This is also the solar panel that passes EPA's toxicity leaching procedure testing, T-clip test, which essentially means it does not leach, it is fairly classified as non-hazardous material. It is a piece of electronics, so of course it is not for consumption, but for it to be out in the field, operational, it absolutely doesn't pose any risk to the environment or human health. Additional benefit, and something that we're proud of, and since the summer, I'm actually able to officially share this with communities that we work in. As this summer, we have solidified our agreement with First Solar, which includes commitment to using their recycling facilities. We've already used that in the past, so at our Mount Jackson facility, we had a, several panels break. We send them back to Perrisburg, Ohio, to the recycling facility. And now, we've also agreed that all of our panels in the US will be sent back for recycling. So First Solar has been adding facilities in Alabama and Louisiana, both manufacturing and recycling. 90% of the solar panel gets recycled and reused. So when we, the second bullet point shows 90% of the components can be recycled and reused. 100% of the solar panel is recyclable. The 10% is losses during production and processing of these components. The semiconductor itself can be reused 41 times. So if you think about the lifetime of a solar panel, that's over 1,000 years. Other components than the semiconductor, such as adhesives or glass, they also are reused. So First Solar has active contracts with bike handle manufacturers, shoe sole manufacturers for their rubber products. They have contracts with the paint on the road that has the reflective glass beads, some of that glass goes to that. So they've done a great job to make sure that their panels are, don't end up in a landfill and have really positive impact on the environment. And as a last point, as I mentioned, the T-clip test. A little bit more detail about the decommissioning. So we will remove all the above and below ground equipment. Majority of that gets recycled. As we talk about solar panels, there's also a lot of wiring, copper, steel products. So that all has a very high value, very high salvage value, so we will endeavor decommissioning and recycle most of what's on site. And again, one last point, the surety bond will be put in place to provide for effective Thank you.
Thank you. Some questions? You got any questions?
You mentioned that surety bond several times. Have you ever, has that ever had to be used?
No, it never had to be used, but we have put that surety bond in place with several localities already.
Why Patrick County? Are you following AEP's upgrade?
No.
Just looking at the map, why Patrick County?
So it's one of several localities. We have active development in about 12 different localities right now. So the siting of a solar project does start with looking at the grid infrastructure and working with the utility. What sort of lines are there? What substation is there? Is the substation able to accommodate load being put on it? And as we gradually analyze the grid, if we find a location that's good for producing energy, then we start looking at the land. Is the land suitable for solar? Is there a landowner that's interested in the grid plus the landowner? That's why we're in Patrick County.
Why, I noticed in your slide, it says 35 to 45 years you decommission, and then the land is put back. Why would you decommission after 35, 45 years if you're providing energy?
So that is the length of the agreement with the landowner. Usually, they're not willing to sign the land for longer. We have some leases that are 50 years, we have some that are 30. So it really depends on how long we can work with this landowner. And exactly to your point, our first course of action, when the lease ends, would be go back to the landowner and try to renegotiate. But because we don't have that certainty, we try to put some time limits on it.
I've got a couple. All right. If you came to Patrick County, is everything you're going to use new stuff, or has it been recycled or used somewhere else?
It's all new, so it's brand-new manufacturing. I don't think at this point First Solar has enough of the panels that went back to them to provide the recycled panels. But I can't have 100% certainty on that. But in terms of, has it been manufactured even though components are recycled? Then yes, it is brand-new manufacturing with warranty, and it's all Tier 1 components and manufacturers.
Okay, so it won't be something that you might think you could get by with in Patrick County that wouldn't be accepted somewhere else?
No, absolutely not. And I think the siting agreement has some provisions, talking about, you know, electric code requirements, UL-listed equipment. So it all has to be so quality product. And it is also for our financing partners, when we work with, you know, big banks, Bank of America, Morgan Stanley, they will not accept products that are not tried and tested.
And I saw on the presentation some estimates on the tax that the county would get. How are those solar panels figured? Are they figured like everything else in the county that all the other businesses use? Or they figured at a rate of $1.71 machine and tools tax?
Yes, sir. It's machinery and tools taxes.
Is there any other tax off of the amount of electricity generated, or whatever?
Not for the electricity. So there's one tax that we will pay, the real estate tax, and that will be if the value is increased because of the equipment, then we'll pay it on the increased value. And then there's a second path, it's either MNT tax or revenue share. And I know the county has passed a revenue share ordinance, so we're happy to follow that. In some cases, the MNT taxes would actually be greater than revenue share. And so I think this is something we want to make sure we capture in the siting agreement.
You mentioned at the onset of the project, if approved, you would give the county $100,000. What's that purpose?
Any county project that, it will go to the county budget, and it's up to the board to decide how that gets distributed. We've worked with many localities where, instead of a general contribution, we were able to support specific projects, so it will be contribution to EMS, local library. So we just always try to make sure that we participate in some fashion with the local communities.
Another question, might be a little dumb, but what kind of vegetation you're talking about putting on them? It won't be something like we've got into before with kudzu, and something not native to the area?
No. Yeah, it's native, non-invasive vegetation.
Okay. I think that's about all the questions I had. Anybody else? Anything? Mr. Perry?
I answered the two I had during the presentation.
I answered two, Denise answered me.
I'm sorry.
No, I'm glad you asked him, I didn't have to. I think that's everything, and we appreciate your presentation, and...
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next thing we have was Mr. Rick Ward and Gary Clifton, Blue Ridge Regional Library, update.
Is it past your bedtime, Rick?
First of all, I can say I'll be speaking for less than three minutes. I hope you appreciate. So I'll be just talking a little bit about our library. And thank you all for letting us speak tonight. The Patrick County Library and Bookmobile circulated over 58,000 items this last fiscal year. Almost 42,000 of those were at our library, and 16,000 were the Bookmobile. That is almost 34% of the entire library system. So, you know, we're doing really well at Patrick County in the Bookmobile. The library in Bookmobile had over 40,000 visits in the last fiscal year. So I can happily tell you that the library in Bookmobile are still very popular with our Patrick County citizens. The library in Bookmobile are a vital part of our community. In just the last year, we partnered with the Patrick County Master Gardeners on many projects, Bull Mountain Arts, and participated in both of the county festivals and the fair and Halloween Spooktacular. We are also delighted to offer special programs like our yearly castle party and the Youth Art Month celebration, as well as hosting the winners of the Rock Spring Art Show. And don't forget about our occasional book signings from our local authors. And the Bookmobile will once again be in the Christmas parade, where the kids love to wave at their librarian, Ms. Gail, as she drives by. That's always fun. We offer programs for all ages, from preschool through our golden years, and I can say that because I'm getting pretty golden myself. We offer internet through computer access and 24-hour Wi-Fi. I think we're the only place within, I don't know, 30 miles where you can, a patron can come in and get something faxed or copied. We also have a scanner available. We do offer many online services with your library card and the internet. You can download eBooks and e-audio. But we also have online movies, television, and even some master class courses that are free through our Hoopla app. And you can take free online classes with Universal Class, which features over 500 online continuing education courses. We also offer Ancestry for Virginians, which gives access to digitized and indexed records and materials that would otherwise require a paid ancestry.com subscription. I could go on and on, but you don't want me to? I know that you'd like to go home at some point, so I'll just finish by saying, please come by the library, and I'll be happy to give you a full tour, tell you everything. I guarantee you that our local public library is the best deal around. Let's keep it that way. We just please ask that you keep us properly funded. And that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll be even briefer. The document that you have now, that Amy passed out, is a document for the entire library system. We gave that to all three of the localities to just show you some of the stuff that we've been doing. been doing within the library system, and a lot of it is available here in Patrick County. Believe it or not, I wanted to touch base on what happened there in summer reading this year, but I understand y'all been kind of busy the past couple months, so I'm sort of delayed coming here with that. Back in June, June, we had our kickoff of Magician Captain Jim and Lady Louisa at Stone Hall on Patrick and Henry Community College, and we had 134 attendees. The reason we do summer reading is because it prevents summer slide. As many of you have already heard before, children and teens who attended summer reading programs perform better academically and experience greater gains in their academic performance than their non-participating peers. Participants outperform non-participants on tests across all measures and grades, kindergarten through eighth. The effect of summer reading programs did not differ by gender, limited English proficiency status, or economically disadvantaged status. The Patrick County branch provided a total of 28 programs with 373 participants, which included childrens, teens, and we did some outreach programs. Also, 77 adults participated in the summer reading program, so we thought that was fantastic. Now, for the darker side of our conversation tonight, I just wanted to remind everyone that in January of 2025, the minimum wage increases to $13.50 an hour, and that is going to be a crunch. And it also causes salary compression, so please don't be surprised when we come back for an increase to cover this minimum wage and raises for our staffs, because there's nothing we can do about it. This is state mandated $13.50 an hour. But, and like I said, I want to keep it short and sweet so that y'all can go home tonight too. So if you have any questions, fire away.
Tell your voter is up for that, for that budget. Vote her up, I keep.
Thank you all. You all are wonderful. Always enjoy your services.
Appreciate all your support. Thank you. Y'all, thank you for your time.
Thank you.
All right, next we got Declaration of Emergency Burn Ban. An update on the fires. And I guess, I guess I need to read this thing. County Patrick Board of Supervisors Declaration of a Local State of Emergency at a Business Beaten of the Board of Supervisors of Patrick County, Virginia, held at the Patrick County Veterans Memorial Building on November the 20th, 2023. I had a little note that you gave me. I forgot where I need to insert it. Declaration of a local.
Declaration of emergency and burn ban.
All right, so, so we're going to extend it. Declaration of a local state of emergency and declaration of a local state of emergency and burn ban. Now we got it. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of the County of Patrick, Virginia, does hereby find as follows, that due to the occurrence of excessive drought, the County of Patrick is facing a condition of extreme peril to the lives, safety, and property of the residents of Patrick County. That as a result of the extreme peril, the proclamation of the existence of an emergency is necessary to admit the full powers of government to deal effectively with the condition, this condition of peril. Now therefore, be it hereby proclaimed by the Board of Supervisors of the County of Patrick, Virginia, that as of November the 1st, 2023, a local emergency exists through the County of Patrick, and it is further proclaimed and ordered that during the existence of this emergency, the powers, functions, and duties of the Emergency Management Director and the Emergency Management Organizations and Functions of the County of Patrick shall be those prescribed by the laws of the Commonwealth of Virginia and the Ordinance's Resolutions and Approved Plans of the County of Patrick in order to migrate the effects of said emergency. In order to carry out the effects of this resolution, a sum of money not to exceed $1,000 is hereby appropriated from the county's contingency fund to cover the reasonable operational costs of emergency services pending further report to this board and such additional appropriations that shall be deemed necessary to cover the expected scope of this emergency. All right, and we'll need a motion to approve this.
So moved.
Got a motion, second, second, and a vote?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye also. And we need to schedule a public hearing for December the 11th. Did I get ahead of myself?
He's just going to give.
You got Scotty.
Miss Lynn asked me to give an update on the fires here lately. Before I do, I'd like to thank the citizens of Patrick County, Floyd, and everybody that contributed to our efforts up there. We should be very proud of our community. There was not a need that wasn't met up there. If we had a need, Nick at Tuggles Gap roadside end, put it out there, and we had more than enough show up. To the point, I think administration called me when we put out the ental and all that stuff with the soil aches and joints, that there were none in Patrick County. But that being said, I'd like to share a little story with you. If everything came in, believe me, I was grateful that it came in. The logistics officer said he had never worked with any county like this where people were fighting to bring stuff to us. And I mean stuff, they were bringing carloads in day and night. But I have a little sandwich with me, a little mini sandwich. A church group in Fancy Gap, has a little Christian school up there, and they had, she didn't tell me how old she was, but she said she's a little bit of a girl, has a speech impairment, says she doesn't talk. And she come in, they done a drive force up there. She come in carrying this little sandwich bag, and all she could muster up was help firefighter. And she put it in the bag and they took one of me that was in there, so it was already smushed and everything. So I actually put that in the command center to remind me of what this community meant to us. So I just want to share that with y'all tonight. That's what our community is here. Now for the fire itself, this fire actually started on October the 30th with a downed power line. Tree blew across the power line in the mountains, very rugged terrain to get to. The first fire burned for three days. We contained it to 36 acres. Deemed it out, cold, Department of Forestry did. Weather conditions turned on us, dried out, and what's called the duff reignited. In efforts to try to control the fire again, it got out of control. The Department of Forestry and National Team lost control of it, ended up burning almost 1,200 acres before we could get ahead of it and stop it. In the affected area, there was 28 homes. Of those 28 homes, none suffered damage. There was no injuries reported. The community came together. The Department of Forestry brought in four dozers. There was two, I know at least two personal dozers were brought in by citizens to help with the efforts. The community worked great hours. The Woolly Line Fire Department put in over 1,100 hours themselves. The, we're still getting the numbers in for the total volunteer hours, but they're looking to be at excessive 3,000 hours for volunteers. That's not counting Department of Forestry, Department of Corrections that brought officers in every day. We also had the U.S. Forestry Service here. They brought teams in from Washington State, from Pennsylvania to help fight our fire. We had a Blackhawk coming in from National Guard. If any of y'all seen it fly, and then we had what we called the circus ship flying in. It was brightly colored and it was doing airdrops as well. So hands off, hats off, and we owe everybody a great thanks for what they've done up there. For a fire that big and not to lose any structures, any damage, and I'm sure some of y'all seen the footage of the rock castle, the fight to save it. Initially, when we done our assessment of the, the property in the dangered area, we'd actually written off one of the houses. We deemed it un, we couldn't save it due to efforts of the Forest Department and the volunteers. They refused that, and they were able to save it. It was actually a cabin nestled on the edge of a cliff. So they actually did save that somehow. So we, they refused, their volunteers refused to leave that structure. So that was a great part of them. We had people coming as far as Greensboro to donate. We had Montgomery County, we had Surry, North Carolina, any of our jurisdictions around us came to help. Floyd was a great help. They brought in wet UTVs to man the lines at night. Without that, we'd have lost a lot more land. Our original estimate was going to be 2,700 acres, which is comparable to the last Bull Mountain fire. And we know that burned all the way around the mountain. So we was able to keep it contained to that, that little, we say little, but it's a very large area of 1,100 acres. And the terrain there was very rough, to the point where the dozer was going through and all of a sudden run into a 30-foot cliff. And if that had been for spotters, he would actually run off the cliff because the vegetation had covered it. Some of the creeks, if you look at aerial maps now, look like roads. They done a great job. We are still patrolling the area up there. While this was going on, we didn't forget about the rest of the county. The Patrick County Fire Department in Patrick Springs had another 15 acres burned. We had another three acres out there today burned, same locality. Air Rat had another 15 acre brush fire. That was all caused by people burning. So we want to remind everybody about the burning ban. The government has also issued one. We know we call it for some rain. There's nowhere to be near enough to lift the ban. Everybody's going to think it is, but please don't burn. But just remember, you firefighters out there, they give a lot and ask very little. So, any questions about the fires?
Other than I've seen you too much today, but I greatly appreciate you.
I woke up this morning to him and I left just a few minutes ago at a scene of a burnt fire.
Started our day and ended our day with, but I greatly appreciate you.
Before I, before I begin, the smoke we saw today, that is coming from Stokes, coming over the mountain. If you've seen earlier today, you couldn't even see the Blue Ridge Mountains. And Franklin County had a very large fire where they actually had to issue evacuations coming off the, off the lake. So we're right there in the middle, come right over the mountains, and smoked us out. That's the reason we had so much smoke today. And believe you me, we chase smoke calls the whole day long. And we'll gladly do it again today, just to make sure everything's safe in Patrick County.
We definitely appreciate everything, all the public safety did.
Now, do we schedule a public hearing for the school? Okay. We'll need a motion to schedule a public hearing for December the 11th, 2023 to amend Patrick County Public Schools Fiscal Year 2023-2024 Budget. entertain a motion?
I'll make that motion.
Motion?
I'll second.
Couple vote?
Aye.
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 And I vote aye also. All, all, all business administrator report?
I'm trying to make this short since I don't have much of a voice. I would request, I just need a consensus from the board. The way Christmas falls this year, our employees only get one and a half per the state holidays. They only get one and a half days off. So December 22nd is a Friday, and the way the state has it is that we would work half of a day and half off the afternoon. Due to many requests off and due to the hard work of the employees throughout the year, I would request that Patrick County offices close for the full day on the 22nd. That way our employees can enjoy a four-day weekend. If y'all have any questions or comment about that, I'm happy to elaborate more.
Anybody?
Sounds, sounds good to me.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Couple vote then. Mr. Simmons?
Aye.
Aye.
And I vote aye also.
Thank you. I'm sure they'll greatly appreciate it. Just a couple reminders of upcoming events due to the holidays. The Metta's Day and Christmas Parade is on November 25th. The Hometown Christmas in downtown Stewart is December 1st and 2nd. And then a Parkway Christmas starts in, on December 9th, once again at Metta's Day. So I'll make sure to get all that by email out to y'all through tourism and stuff, all the events. Hopefully y'all can, y'all can join. That's all I have.
Thank you. Supervisors report. I don't know any meetings since our last meeting. Mr. Lo?
Still working with social services to try to get things straight in there.
Mr. Irvin?
I had a Tourism Advisory Council meeting, my last one. Woo-hoo! They voted not to have a December meeting. They continue to do awesome work in the community and hearing a lot of buzz in the state about Patrick County and our tourism director and, and assistant, so that's always good to hear. And then we had West Piedmont Planning District Commission meeting, and we have another one coming up the end of this month on the 30th. And that's it.
Mr. Perry?
So even though I'm, it's not an official meeting thing, but I still like, it's near and dear to my heart. And so I go to our Substance Abuse Drug Prevention Coalition here, that Piedmont Community Services has started. So they're official, they've got the name, they're everything up and rolling. And one of the highlights, and I left my notebook, so I don't have specific dates, but feel free to check with Piedmont to get it. So they've got a, a RV that they take to the communities, and they're specifically going to the Air Rat Ruiton Building to take services to, to Air Rat, because that's a long way to come to Stewart, where they're providing drug prevention services and counseling. So in the Air Rat area, give Piedmont a call, get the time and date, and I'm sorry, I left my notebook, but that service is out there, so please check with that. Also, the Planning Commission, they're moving forward with their comp plan way ahead of schedule, doing an amazing job. And I just have to toot the Planning Commission's horn. They are just such a wonderful group. They go above and beyond. Especially with the solar, where they knew nothing about anything and the time, the effort, the work that they've put in. Last I heard, I think at least 14 counties has reached out to try to borrow their hard work and probably more by now. Anybody interested in really getting involved with how this county shapes up without being political, that Planning Commission's the place to be. And then last week, STEP had their annual retreat where we got to meet and get to know better their, their new ED. So it was a lot of fundamental organization and restructuring that they had. So we look forward to great and wonderful things coming out of STEP this upcoming year.
That's it. Thank you. And let's see, we had a PSA meeting that was on the 24th of October. Most of it was just formality and updates on the amount of water used and versus how much we're losing, which, which is still a great, great amount of water, but they can't figure out for sure where it's going unless it's fire departments using it and not, not recording it, Scotty. It is quite a large sum that they can't figure, and they haven't found any leak, so it's, it's a pretty good discrepancy on that. And then we had West Piedmont, the Indonesian, and that was mostly just updates on the, some of the grants and formal stuff. Let's see if I got. And then over the weekend, we went to VACO Conference. Beth attended and I did, and it, it was very interesting. It was quite a few committees, committees. I think, I think I attended the Agricultural and Rural Affairs Committee, Community Economic Workforce Development, and so many I can't even remember them all. And a lot of it was good information that we can use. Trying to find a couple more that was really interesting. I think I attended two different committee meetings on broadband. And, and one of the things that I really do remember on that, there was a fellow from the federal government there, can't remember his name, but I got his card, and he said that we really needed to make sure we got all of the, the forms filled in for the federal, federal form, the ones that are, what do you call it, under, like, like the amount of speed you get. And he said they had raised that now to if you're under 100 megabytes download and 25 going up, you're under, underserved. And I suspect that's most of Patrick County unless you got Starlink or something else. So that might be something we need to look and make sure we got it all reported, because he said that was really important for getting the grants, is having all the communities and all the people that were underserved. And I remember that one for sure, because I'm really interested in broadband. And we had one, Virginia's Energy Landscape, and that was one thing I picked up on that. that was one thing I picked up on that. It was one power provider there that said with all of this solar stuff and all that's coming, that the grid wasn't adequate for it. It said the grid was about five years behind being able to handle all of this stuff that they were trying to acquire from the solar farms and the wind and all of that. And trying, and also trying to shut down the fossil fuel. So he said the grid was nowhere near prepared to handle all of that. And it was about five years behind. And there was another one on rural economic development. It brought up some ideas that rural areas could do with their economic development. And I think that was the only one that I had on it. And I think that's all I had. It's been a, been a right long month. And but, but the VACO Conference was very good. And it did hit on a lot of, a lot of really interesting stuff for us. All right. And I think that's, is that all we got? Executive session?
I've got his dates. It's actually this Wednesday, 9 to 12 through the building.
Perfect. Thank you.
Don't, don't, don't forget that thing, Scotty. I don't know if I mentioned it to you or not, but on the PSA, they've asked the fire departments to try to.
Yeah, they're supposed to notify dispatch. Dispatch wants to notify.
They're not doing it. And it was like 400,000 gallons over a certain period of water that can't be accounted for that we're paying for. And they don't mind you using it, but just, just try to keep a record of how much is used. Because that many gallons, then they're afraid it's a leak and they're out looking everywhere trying to find it. All right. Who's going to read the code?
Brandon.
I move that the board convene in closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A1 to discuss and consider the following: Appointment of a representative for the Dan River District to the Solid Waste Committee; Appointment of a representative from the Dan River Alcohol Safety Action Program ASAP Board; And pursuant to the Virginia Code Section 2.2-3711A3, discussion of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose. Will discussion and opening meeting will adversely affect the board's bargaining position and negotiation strategy related to the hospital.